I can do that. Oh, Rosh Hashanah begins at sundown that day.
Oh, we can't then. We went through that last year.
You did?
Yeah.
Oh, well, good evening. Caught me by surprise. Good evening. It's 7:04 and welcome to the Milton Board of Selectmen meeting. Call to order the meeting and our first order of business is to review and approve minutes.
I'm moved that we approved the meeting minutes from August 14th, 2017.
Second.
Any discussion?
Time's flying by.
Sure. All in favor?
You have a moment since someone's going.
Hi. Okay, we're going to confirm future meeting dates now. The board is set to meet again on September 6th. We are going to look at a second September date, probably for the third week in September now, as we do have some conflicts the week of the 18th, 19th, and 20th where Rosh Hashanah begins. We will also be attending, for those of you at home, the MPIC Milton to discuss the Milton Plan Implementation Committee's Milton Landing and Wharf area discussion on October 16th. So, we look forward to that as a group. And Emily will be following up with you on that second meeting date. The fourth item on our agenda is Citizen Speak. Do we have anyone today for Citizen Speak? Emily, please write down your address. It's informing me to make sure that I make sure everybody writes down their name and address now.
My name's Emily Martin, Four Hope Avenue, and I am here about the Red Shoe Run Walk that we do. It's now our fourth annual. So, in October 2013, a fetal car crash claimed the life of Dan Breen of Situate. He was a 23-year-old who worked at the Milton Hospital, BID Milton Emergency Department. He was a transport aide there. He was loved by everybody. He was give you the shirt off his back, the nicest kid you could ever meet, and he had a goal to enter emergency management and disaster preparedness as doing a master's and working in that field. After he passed away, his family started a scholarship in his name at his alma mater at St. Anselms, and within, I think, four months of starting it, they raised their $50,000 goal, which was very impressive. We had started the run as a way to remember him and to continue fundraising, but since they met the endowment, we've since shifted our goal to make an endowment at the hospital. So, currently, we are fundraising. We have a five-year goal of $50,000. At this point, I believe we've raised $33,000, so we have $17,000 to go to become endowed, and once we meet that requirement, they're going to pay for different trainings. They can use the money to buy equipment for the emergency department and to just kind of generally improve, you know, their preparedness for any kind of things that happen. You know, they do run drills. My sister's a nurse at the hospital, but they run drills with kids at Curry College. You know, what if some infection happened, you know, things to be prepared like that. So, the money we raise is just going to go further, that type of education for everybody in the emergency department. So, the fourth annual Red Shoe Run is on Saturday, September 9th, at 10:00 a.m. We start at the Cunningham School and follow the route that the Milton Road Race does. And last year, I think we had 150 or so participants, and we did raise our $10,000 goal, which was great, but we want to continue, you know, raising as much as we can because it's a great resource in the town. We want to support them and make sure that they're ready for anything that we need from them. So, we have registration. It's at www redshoerun.racewire.com. And we also, if you want to volunteer or anything, we do have an address of djbredshoerun@gmail.com, and we can get you in touch with our volunteer coordinator, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well said. Appreciate you helping us out on that and that family. The fifth item on our agenda is we have Rich Fernandez, the president and CEO of Bethel Deaconess Hospital here in Milton. Welcome, Rich.
Thank you for having me.
Again, welcome to our community.
You guys get your running shoes on for this? I don't have red shoes, but I'm ready to run.
Yeah. I think we all should be running a little bit more here. We had Tom Hurley on our board previously, and I never could meet his time in the Monster Dash Road Race, so we'll be kind of aiming for that next year. But yeah, thank you for joining us, and I know you've been here in the community for a while, and you were involved at the Hospital Gala.
Yep.
Which was a great event, getting to know a lot of people here in our community. We've all been able to meet with you separately and start to make our connections, and we're very happy to have you here.
Perfect. Thank you for the introduction. It's been a pleasure. I've been here seven months and again, met many people in this community, and the spirit here in the town of Milton and for the support for the hospital has just been tremendous. So, what I was hoping to do tonight, just spend a few minutes, tell you a little bit about kind of who we are today, the vision for the future, and then how we can work together to preserve the, you know, tremendous foundation that we've developed here of excellence at BID Milton Hospital. So, who are we today? I like to brag a little bit. You know, we are a vibrant, growing, regional, community hospital. We're in fact, the second fastest-growing hospital in the state of Massachusetts from '14 to '17. Many of you have seen this evolution. I think it all really began in 2012 with the merger with the Bethel Deaconess Medical Center, which I know for many in the town, in the community, I know at our hospital, our medical staff was met with a little bit of trepidation of what it all meant. I think when you look back over the last five years, it's been a tremendous success on all fronts. You know, we're stronger as a hospital. We've been able to add clinical services, and more and more people are seeing us as more than just an emergency department and an inpatient hospital. So, today, we're nationally recognized for our quality, safety, and patient experience. Since the partnership with the Medical Center, you know, we've added over 21 specialists from the Medical Center who now come out to BID Milton and see patients here. Things like, you know, sports medicine, hand specialists, neurologists, sleep medicine, many, many specialties. We actually started a women's health program here about three years ago, and it's been a remarkable success, taking care of, you know, general GYN for all ages of women, subspecialties like cardiology and neurology. And in fact, I didn't actually didn't know this until two weeks ago, but 200 women choose to get their prenatal care at our Women's Health Center, deliver their babies at the Medical Center, and then come back to our Women's Health Center for their postnatal care. I would say that if you're a woman, there's really no need to go to Boston. You can just stay right here in Milton. We have four terrific providers there, and we're going to continue to grow that. I think many people, and I think you all are aware in the town of Milton, know, you know, we have a premier orthopedics program and joint replacement program anchored by Dr. Barry, a longtime person on our staff, and then I would say bolstered by Dennis Burke and Dr. Nina Shirven, who came here. We actually do more joint replacements at BID Milton than we do at most teaching hospitals downtown, including the Medical Center. This is clearly a niche, and we want to continue to broaden our orthopedic niche. When you, I actually, in my second month here, got to go watch Dr. Burke and Shirven do hip replacement surgery on a 70-year-old lifelong, in fact, their entire family lifelong MGH patient. Never been anywhere but the MGH, but their orthopedic surgeon recommended for hip replacement to come to BID Milton and have Dennis and Nina operate them. So, I got to watch the surgery. It was amazing. It was like a symphony. It was 48 minutes from incision to, it blew me away. I thought it was going to be in there for two hours, but they were, and watching Dennis and Nina, they are not only technically superb, but they treat everybody in that room as, you know, part of the team. I told Dennis it was like watching a symphony. I was just hearing music going on, and you know, I, that patient actually wrote us a letter, and he was effusive about his praise from everything, from the education that he and his wife got before surgery, so they'd know exactly what's happening in surgery, and more important with hip replacement, what's going to happen after surgery with PT and rehab. He could not believe that when he walked in the doors, he saw such a modern and pristine facility. He was effusive about his praise for our nurses, both in the surgery, post-surgery. It was just an incredible experience for him, and to me, it kind of epitomizes everything that we're trying to do in this community, and that is provide high-quality subspecialty care close to home with all the touches that make, have always made Milton special in terms of personalized care. I'm convinced, as we continue to grow, you know, we're going to have more and more specialties here from the Medical Center that'll allow patients and families in this community. There really isn't a reason. In fact, I would say to families, if you're looking for subspecialty care, call us first. If we can't have it, we'll find you something, but chances are, we have those specialties. So, when I think about that, that's where we're going. It's all those specialties besides emergency care. We will always be a tremendous asset for those, but there's so much more that we can provide in this community, and every program we've started with the Medical Center has, you know, scaled at a pace much quicker than we thought, so I think the demand is there. So, how do we make it better? You know, we're working on that every day. We're right now looking to, having expansion plans within our building, adding 12 new private rooms in January, adding additional OR, and expanding and remodeling our physical therapy and rehab services down on the first floor. So, there's a lot of physical improvements. We're continuing to try to grow programs as well. You know, my job, I believe my job is really to kind of inform as many people about the breadth and depth of services that we offer, because I'm not certain everybody actually knows everything we've offered, because this happens relatively quickly. I would say my other job is really to call in leaders like all of you to help kind of come see, touch, feel, and be advocates for us. Come to the hospital, get a tour, see some of our new facilities, talk to our staff. You know, help us get the community involved. Obviously, my door is always open, my cellphone to anybody in the community. I want to hear their input. You know, our goals are really to inform as, again, as many people about the wonderful services that we have, to engage every patient and family that I can talk to about the great quality and how, you know, I along with our team will ensure high-quality, high-value, and compassionate care that I think everybody in this community knows is what we strive for each and every day. So, when I think of what does this all mean for the town of Milton, you know, it's an exciting, exciting time to be part of BID Milton. I also know that by working together with the town and the citizens of this great town that, you know, there's a lot ahead of us in terms of where we can go. So, I look forward to getting to know you all better, getting to know this community better, but together, I know that the future is bright, and that if we continue to focus and partner on serving the patients in Milton and our surrounding communities, we're on the right track. So, I'd be happy to take questions. I know you all have a packed agenda. I'll pause there.
Rich, we appreciate you coming in and letting the folks know at home what you're all about. We have met you, and we've gotten to know you a little bit, you know, through community events. You guys have been excellent throughout our community for many, many years.
Yep.
And you had some big shoes to fill with Peter Haley being your predecessor, but obviously picked the right guy for this community.
Thank you.
You fit in perfectly, and I think that as people in our community get to know you, they'll realize that they have someone who truly deeply does care about our community and our needs.
Yep.
We're very fortunate to have a great public safety system here and to have a hospital that's growing to meet the needs of our residents, to not have to travel is, it makes it very fortunate, so thank you.
Yes, well, I'm glad to be here, and been here seven months. I thought I knew a lot after four or five, but I'm still learning every day and look forward to feedback from all of you and again, people in this community. My door's always open, love to get input.
Rich, can you say a few words about the happening at the parent level and what we're reading about in the newspapers?
Yeah.
I know you had a community meeting with some people.
Yep.
But not, obviously not everyone was there, and a lot of people who are watching probably haven't, aren't just familiar with some of the changes that the Medical Center's looking at with the relationships with other hospitals. Could you just at a high level speak to that?
So, at a high level, the Bethel Deaconess Medical Center is looking to partner with four other hospitals, the Leahy Health System, Anna Jakes, Mount Auburn, and New England Baptist. Those hospitals, this is mainly a geographic play. If you look in the map, all those hospitals are either central or north or west of the city. So, it would really allow the Bethel Deaconess system to have geographic coverage along the eastern coast. So, for BID Milton, you're not going to see a change locally here. It will only help, just like in 2012 when we joined the system, you know, I think it would only help elevate our brand, our reputation, and our reach, and continue to allow us to recruit and at the Medical Center level, high-quality physicians. I think if you talk to people at the Medical Center, they'll say that the BID Milton partnership has kind of been their ideal partnership of how you work with a community hospital and an academic hospital. I think that's evident, you know. We've started a bariatric program here, robotics, the, you know, the orthopedic growth here. We're going to continue to work with the Medical Center. So, what I would say is, it is, we are getting bigger, but I only think it'll help strengthen what now is, the BI is kind of in the market, a lower-cost, high-value, high-quality system. My sense is, with so much pressure on healthcare costs today, that's a very sweet spot, and we want to expand that with these other hospitals, joining the network.
And that was the message that was conveyed at the, at the meeting that was held with a lot of the overseers and some other community stakeholders, but you're right that five years ago, there was a lot of trepidation about the local hospital joining a much bigger system, but I, it really has proven to be quite a success, and I think, you know, you and your predecessor and the board led by Mike Brady really deserve a lot of the credit for
Absolutely.
what has transpired over these last five years.
Yep. I agree.
So, I just have one thing that I want to, and you know, we talked a lot. I think we were here for two hours when we talked, and I came out of EMS, I'm a Fallon alum, and I came from the operational side here, and one of the things that we did talk about that you're losing in this, in this expansion is your, is your ARC Health Department from a user to like, for us as a community, like for our police, our fire, our DPW. And it took, and this predates way before I was chief, working for Chief Murren years ago, you know, when you hired someone, you needed an independent medical examiner. If you had drug testing, anything, you had to go find someone. And when you created the ARC Health System that you had, it not just flew a flag for us in Milton to start using, you had over 500 customers. Everyone around us started to use it. And losing that is, I talked to Chief King a little bit about this today, it's just a huge void, and I, from an operational perspective and a patient care perspective, we're in a time today where the opioid crisis is an epidemic of all, and not just the treatment and care, in getting them to back to work, and particularly in the private sector, drug testing, you know, regular, it's, it's a place like you that does it, and so now that's gone, and I just hope that somehow, moving forward, you can find a way to bring that. I know you needed to expand beds, but it was cash, it was 500, I mean, I did a little bit of homework on this. I couldn't believe how many of, not just us, this community used, the town of Milton as a customer.
Yep.
How many of our neighbors were using you, and how big a void it has created for them. I mean, they're just kind of, I know there's been referrals here and there, and Paige made a couple of calls, but it's not the same, you had put in place, excellent. I can't say enough about it.
Yes.
Having used it and seen it, it was a true, you're talking about, all the things you're talking about as assets for this community, it was a huge one.
Yeah, no, I can appreciate that. That was a tough decision.
So, I, I'm going to ask Michael to continue to follow up on that.
Sure.
Continue to try and, because it's something very, it really was a very excellent program that you had there, and I know that there's a lot of police chiefs and fire chiefs and town managers now scratching their heads saying,
Where do I go?
We lost something, where am I going to go? You know, what am I going to do?
No, that's
So, I just wanted to mention that because it really
Appreciate that.
When you said it, I thought about it for a minute, and then I followed up on a little and I'm like, because I just realized how big it was when you got it and how much it grew and how much all of the users of the hospital used, you know, the other communities, not just us.
Yep. It's good feedback.
I'm a big, I told you, I'm a big fan of this hospital.
I know.
It's a big deal to have a hospital, and you like this in your community.
Yep.
Big partner. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate your time, Rich. Thank you for coming in.
Great. Thank you for having me.
Yep.
If there's any other, like I said, any other either events or things you hear about, or we have kind of more formal pieces here, we're happy to be here. I want to be the face, the voice, and the person to deal with some of these tough decisions as we go forward.
Well, we look forward to working with you. Thanks again for coming.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Take care.
Item number six on our agenda tonight is Sustainable Milton. We have Henry McLean and the Sustainable Milton members, Laurie McIntosh, who's the founder of Sustainable Milton. Philippe Generoux and Patrick Morgan coming in to discuss clean energy solutions for the town and its residents.
Welcome.
Welcome.
How are you, Henry?
Very good, Mike.
Good.
Good to see you. Thanks for having us.
Thanks for coming in, everyone. Appreciate it.
Sure, Patrick will tell you probably well, then we'll get started. So, I prepared a few overviews here for this meeting as well. My name's Henry McLean, I'm a resident in Milton and practicing architect here for 20 years. I've been a member of Sustainable Milton for 10 years and chair of the Altern Energy Committee for about five years, which was active in the time Milton became a green community. So, I'm here with other town residents affiliated with Sustainable Milton, and the, and Philippe was on the Altern Energy Committee as well, to consider the board supporting a solarized mass program for Milton. So, this effort would be modeled on the Clean Energy Center, Mass Clean Energy Center Solarized Program. It's, seeks to increase the adoption of small-scale solar electricity in participating communities through a competitive solicitation process that aggregates homeowner buying power to lower installation prices for participants. So, since 2011, there have been close to 60 mass communities have participated in the program directly and about another 24 who have partnered in some way. Through the efforts of a few Milton residents, Milton had submitted twice before for the program, but both times was not selected. So, this last spring, two solar companies who've completed several solarized projects approached a few of us, suggesting that Milton might consider putting out an RFP modeled on the CEC program directly to solar companies, who could themselves commit to a similar savings, that the CEC selected towns were achieving, thus guaranteeing that the program would have the chance of success. So far, these companies have done this in about six different towns, Woburn, Ashland, West Newbury, Sherburne, Dover, and Franklin. But the starting point in all this is getting town approval, which is why we're here tonight. My conversations with Mike, we have discussed this effort with other Sustainable Milton members who would be willing to help with the RFP and help develop a marketing plan to engage a number of groups in Milton with the goal of signing up as many households as possible in the coming four to six months. So, we can just discuss this. I know, I just wanted to give you the overview, and I've got some documents I could pass around for those of you who aren't familiar or seen it. This is, it's off the, some of this I read off the town website or the Solarized Mass website. This is a list of the towns and a handful of information about, and this is just sort of the standard RFP that's been used over and over again by these towns and that's around.
In applying, yes.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for coming in and
Sure.
and discussing this, and I'm glad, you know, you've had a lot of discussion with Mike. I think we all agree that finding ways for efficiencies is where we want to be, and I think that as a town, you know, you guys helped us make a nice step in the right direction to make us a green community, which we truly appreciate. We've got solar in our schools here in Town Hall, and I think our goal is to be, you know, is to find some, some land in town where we can even have a solar farm. I think that, you know, helping our residents reduce costs is number one for this administration, and so
That's great.
So, Michael, thank you for, for your discussions up to this point.
Yeah, and Henry has been very, very reliable with his information. We reached out to Town Council, who also represents Natick. They were successful in doing this. I spoke to the Assistant Town Manager last week, who enlightened me that this doesn't have to go to town meeting. There's a provision that would allow us to, where we could put this RFP out and get the ball rolling. So, I appreciate all the help with, with being able to put this together and coordinate this. I could probably count the number of homes I see in the town with solar on their roof with one hand.
Is that the goal of this program, is to encourage homeowners to pursue solar?
So, yeah, this is all focused on homeowners. It's, it's independent from, you know, independent, you know, separate community solar projects, which would be bigger raise. This is simply for homes. So, four to six kilowatts on a house might reduce their energy use by 30 to 50 percent. So, it's all renewable energy. It's interesting, when we were doing the audit, you know, the information for the long-term energy plan that we had to submit for green communities, about 80 percent of the energy that's actually used in the town is used in households. So, you know, it's a small part for business, and the, and the town itself and the schools is even smaller, so, which is sort of counterintuitive, but so, there are a number of us, you know, we can talk, I've done a number of solar projects on for clients. My house isn't quite oriented. I've got tree issues and orientation issues.
Thank you.
But with the cost dropping, and the average cost is something like 20 to 30 percent reduction by doing this program for the town homeowner, for the homeowner in town. So, Lori's got solar in her house, she could attest to some of that.
I'm one of those ones on
Oh, very good, yeah.
Only you'd never notice it really because of the way my roof is, but I've had solar for over two and a half years. I haven't paid an electric bill since March after the big snow.
Wow.
My solar panels have not only covered my electric use, and I have a pool, but I then bought an electric car because I had such a large
Surplus.
A surplus with ever source, and I still have a large surplus.
Wow.
So, there's great potential out there, and I, I'm not perfect. I don't face directly east either. So, there's lots of homes in town that are potential for this project.
They say somewhere between 10 and 15 percent in average town, so if there are 9,000, 8,000 households in town, that's 8,900. So, that's quite a few, and I think these towns that, like Natick, maybe had 150 sign up. So, it won't be everybody, but it'll, so, again, we, Kathy Doyle submitted this, I think, once or twice.
Twice, yes.
Okay.
She did a lot of the legwork already for us, so we're very grateful to her.
But, but again, we didn't get it, so, you know, that possibility, so, it would come, this, this other option that is sort of presents itself is having, working directly with, you know, with the town and ourselves to just model our RFQ and what we have and RFP, and certainly, we can get some of Kathy's input, I'm sure, and others, but, and there's a lot of these towns I've spoken to already, from people from the ones I mentioned, who again, haven't gone through this.
Sherburne.
Yeah, Sherburne, Dover, Franklin. I even got hold of them on Friday after
They did, okay.
Yeah, and there's a couple of town officials there as well, the town, the planning director in Sherburne, and I think in Dover, who are willing to, you know, talk and share as much. So, again, you know, talked a little bit about this with Philip Clark, and we mentioned we should come here, so here we are.
It's good. I have a neighbor that, like you, has a surplus, and it's just, it's, it's something, you know, if, if you're facing the right direction, you know, you can really reap the benefits, so.
Yep.
You know, I personally would like to see us continue to, you know, push forward and see what we can do, and
Can I ask a question? Because I'm a little unclear on what the purpose of the RFP would be. If this is to encourage private homeowners to pursue this, what, how does the RFP play into that? What would the town be soliciting?
Well, the RFP goes out to all these competing, competing solar companies, and they basically
Just to be able to offer a lower rate to customers?
Right. They submit a proposal which gets reviewed and then selected. One of the towns who did this actually had a sort of a guinea pig house in their way of doing it, and said, each three of these companies that they got down to, I think they interviewed like maybe four, eight or 10, you know, or looked at eight or 10, interviewed three, and had them all actually come up with a proposal for that one house, which actually made it very relevant, and then they could select based on the results of that. So, the RFQ, the RFP that is really a boilerplate that I just passed around is, was developed by the CEC, and these other towns have taken it and just changed the names, the dates, and there's this, Laurie knows more about this because she's, has been, but you get RECs or renewable energy credits when you sign up, and those are due to last until March of 2018 right now, but, so they don't know what's going to happen after, but last year there, they were supposed to go for, I think it was like January of 2016, they went a whole other year, so.
It was supposed to end in April.
You mean, you, you mean us, the town, not so much the homeowner? Who gets the
So, the town
The town gets the RECs, right?
No, the homeowner would get the RECs, but the town is, is
Endorsing.
Is in the RFQ.
Okay, okay. Okay, okay.
Then one solar company would be chosen, and they would then, as part of their proposal, would agree to a discount for all the homes for homeowners that are interested. And so that, therefore, it makes it more cost-effective for each homeowner under this program than if they just went and...
And it's a greater step for us as a green community to give people, it kind of highlights to the opportunity, you know, with the town supporting it, you know.
I think that creates, you know, a uniformed pricing, just as we do in cable and our water rates, actually might even really fly the flag a little more to make people, give them the incentive to do it. Because you think to yourself, why would the average person not want to have an electric, you know, why would they not?
Yeah.
So my question to you, other than like the municipal buildings, the schools and here, and some private homes in town, is there any like other commercial building or place of worship, or anyone that has done this?
In town?
In town, yes. Like Winter Valley, Fall, any of those, Equity House, any of those? None?
Don't think so, that I'm aware of.
There are a few that have, that we could do a study with, J. Boe, you know, we started talking about this with him, because they keep some records down, only about, I don't know how many there are. I think there's something like 100, you know, even in the assessors data, there's information there.
Yeah, there's actually over 100 installations in Milton.
I think a program like this, though, if it were endorsed by us and the town, it helps educate people on, you know, the actualities of what it is, because there's a lot of competition out there, and people get scared by, you know, the people who come up to the door and try to sell them on something, and this way it is highly vetted. Proposals are submitted. It's overseen by a group that knows what they're talking about and doing, and reassures the folks at home that this is a legitimate company, and gives them the opportunity to decide whether or not they'd like to participate. And I think by doing so, you will see more participation.
I agree.
And it doesn't preclude someone from selecting another company to do their home if they decide they want to do it. It's just that you're going to get this rate. And once that rate's established, I think there will be more discussion. Some of these companies will be coming in, because it'll be public knowledge what that rate is, once the RFQ or the RFP is completed, so.
So how long would that program would be available for? Or how long would that company have to?
You determine that in the RFQ, you put it out, give a time, you give a window of what you want to...
You don't want too long of the same company.
Yeah, under the CEC program, it was all done within one calendar year.
Officially, yeah, one year.
Official year, yes, that's right. So it was within 12 months, and most of the legwork was done the first three quarters, and then the last quarter was this massive rush to installation. They did like 100 homes.
Did they make it? And do they, in most cases, do they make it?
Oh, yes, and everybody's really happy.
Some of the companies I've spoken to say there's a window or a minimum of about 30 homes for them to get, you know, to the point where they can offer that rebate for that savings, because they need a certain quantity.
How many companies would you say, if we did this, would you estimate would bid, would show interest in something like this?
I mean, probably might want to limit it, but at 10 or 15?
I would say like a dozen.
See, we would get that, be that many out there, okay. That's what I'm, you know...
They're all aware of the program that already exists through the state, through the CEC, and so now that they've sort of taken the lid off of that and said, any community that wants to do this, you don't have to wait for our blessing, just you guys go ahead and run with it. They're all aware, so.
Yeah. So I reached out to the...
We have a lot of interest.
Deputy Town Manager in Natick gave me a woman's name at the D O E R. I reached out to her about what we were talking about, and five minutes later, I got five emails from companies. Interested in joining. That must have had some success or failure in other municipalities, so it's, hats off to this group for bringing it to the table and getting it here. Just to look at, this is West Newbury I'm looking at here. The RFP was put out in April, and the customer signup period ended in October, so it's a pretty quick turnaround.
Yeah, we're seeing five or six months even, yeah. So with that looming deadline, which, you know, we'll find out over the winter when that, or how that's going to be extended, they, pretty much, because of the quantity of people that are investing in solar now, they think that it will get extended, but there's no guarantee on it, so it's, we'll have to find out and see.
Well, what do you say we get a little bit more information and put it on a future agenda item, and talk about potential support here for your program and for the town, and then continue to move forward on this?
Okay.
I think it's great, and I appreciate you guys coming in tonight and educating the public and also us on these possibilities.
Great, thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Keep telling your story.
Keep telling that story.
Yeah, it's a great one.
That's a good one. I didn't expect that one. I knew about the electric car and everything, but I didn't know it was that good.
Do you have a copy of that electronically?
Yeah, could you get us this electronically?
Or even the other, we can, oh, two.
Yeah, Quincy just joined as well. I think they had 180 customers.
In the first year?
Yeah.
And I sent you Apollo, Mike, and two of those towns, some of the town planners too, so if you want to reach out to them.
Yep.
Sounds like it's worth exploring.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you for coming in.
Okay, well, speaking of green, next, we have a conference on the Green Communities Grant with Bill Clark and Bill Ritchie. They're going to discuss their work regarding the Green Communities Grant, which to date has earned the town $647,893 in Green Communities and D O E R fund grants. Good evening, guys. How are you?
Good.
Well, it's good that we get to follow them, because some of the data that Henry said we actually have in this building. We have it in the schools, too. As many people already know, Town of Milton was designated as a green community back in 2010. Since becoming a green community, the town has reduced its overall energy consumption by some 25 percent town-wide. Each year, in order for the town to maintain its green community designation, we're required to update our annual report to the Green Communities and to Mass Energy Insight. It's a really cumbersome website that all of our, all of our energy bills are entered into it, all of the gas consumption is entered into it, our heating oil's in there, all of the solar has to be in there, and it's been a, it's been a chore to get all of those numbers put into the database. Once we complete our annual reporting, we're allowed to competitively participate for grant, energy grant funding up to $250,000 per year. I'm excited to report that the Town of Milton has been very fortunate to have an energy commission, an energy committee that is very dedicated to this mission, and it's been very successful. I'd like to thank some of the past and present members, Bill Ritchie, Diane Coligan, Jay Bell...
Bell, oh, oh, yeah.
Thank you. I said Jay. Bob Mayhew, Emily Martin, Tim Zawinski, Lauren Macier, and our resident expert, Henry McLean, who you just heard from. We're pleased to inform you that on June 19th, the Town of Milton was awarded $246,645 from the Department of Energy Resources. During that same time, we applied for additional energy incentive funding of $54,355 to make it a complete $301,000 in energy projects slated for just this year. To date, $50,000's been approved by the utilities, and we're optimistic that the rest will be coming soon.
And it is. It was.
It's already here, all right. Since 2011, and including this grant round, the Town of Milton has received $647,893 in community, in Green Communities and D O E R funded projects. Over the same period, the town's received approximately $220,000 in utility funding and other grants to assist with the energy upgrades throughout town. The good news doesn't stop here. Once the current energy projects are installed and combined, for the last four years of energy projects completed, the continued energy savings for the entire town will be close to $160,000 a year. The following is a list of energy projects scheduled for the coming year. $40,435 for the Cunningham-Collicott upgrade on the, on their heating system. $52,859 on Glover on energy analytic software for its heating system, heating and cooling system. $44,347 for the high school fieldhouse lighting. $32,125 for lighting here in Town Hall. $29,748 for public works lighting in the buildings down there. They're pretty dark right now, and these will actually provide new lights, provide new life to some of those buildings. $32,508 for the police station lighting. $14,622 for the East Milton Fire Boiler Jacket for their furnace. Now, going back to what Henry was talking about, solar power initiatives. We have PPA agreements for four schools that total 717 kilowatts, which is 2,478 panels. The high school has, has 1,342 panels. Pierce Middle School has 495 panels. Tucker School has 78 panels. Glover, 572. The energy savings for the schools per year for this electricity is $93,000 a year. Cunningham-Collicott is a town-owned solar array system that was installed in 2010. It's a 67.5 kilowatt array. There's 270 panels. That saves an additional $11,500 a year for, towards energy savings. The Town Hall, we applied for, in 2009, we had a federal grant for solar panels. We had an accident during 2014 when they came off the roof. We had a new system put on the roof in 2015. The new system is 35 kilowatt. It's 128 solar panels and saves about $9,500 per year on Town Hall's electric bill. That is about $4,000 more than the original set of panels that came off the roof. It's just due to efficiencies. So when you hear Henry and Lori talking about, you know, putting new solar panels on the roofs, people who did it 10 years ago versus people who are doing it now, the efficiencies in that stuff is much, much greater. Some of the other projects that we've done through the Green Communities projects, we've had updates to the different fire station boilers, we've had upgrades to the police station heating system, we've had new garage doors placed at the police station, we had a new side door placed on the Town Hall building. The middle school, the high school, all had interior and exterior lights, lighting upgrades.
That's pretty good, yeah.
We had, we had some other stuff that we did over at Council on Aging.
Yeah, stuff we didn't have.
We did try to spread this around. We didn't want to go all one budget. We wanted everybody's budget to get a little bit of benefit.
Yeah, so I think the big thing to know is going forward, these are competitive rounds, so they get, you know, the last few years, we've been pretty lucky. I like the sequence that we are, it's like every other year we apply for the grants, is what happens, like this grant, this grant was just awarded to us about two and a half weeks ago. So now we're in the process of just signing contracts, you just signed the contract, I give it to the vendor. By the time we get these projects completed, it's going to be well into December. Then we have to apply for annual, you know, the annual Green Communities again, and then we have to get all these, all these back to D O E.
D O E R.
Yeah, the window is just never, it never really works for us. This is a late year. We usually get this, we usually probably starting like probably August 1st, so this year we were, you know, we got the money a bit late in the year. And then you have to apply for them again, and then go, and then you have to get all the new projects. So it's really hard, very few people, unless you're really doing it 40 hours a week as a, as a grant writer, for us, it's like, you know, it's another, it's a piece of our jobs, so you really, it's crunching numbers, it's really difficult. So I like the sequence that we get the projects, we get the money, we go for the second year, and it's all competitive.
We're, every other year, because by the time we finish installing all of the items, we then have to write the, the annual report. You cannot apply unless your annual report is in.
100 percent.
And, yeah, 100 percent.
And all the projects 100 percent completed.
I think we're pretty fortunate, you guys have been on the ball in this, the residents, all of us included. The cost savings is incredible, so we're reaping the rewards right now, but it is obviously a tedious process, ongoing, so thank you for doing that. We appreciate it.
We're looking for that, we're just over a million that we've either brought in or saved, but combined.
Over the last five years, about a million dollars in energy upgrades and savings. It's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money, yes, sure is.
It's a lot of money that we as, we weren't paying out of our Milton tax dollars.
No question.
Paying the state, but we're not paying it as the other.
What's big out there, Bill, looming that like, you'd like to get done?
Well, this, you know, we're acting good, you know, being on the capital committee and getting grants. So this year, actually, we're doing brand new boilers at the Town Hall, so I'm kind of, I had them on the schedule for the last five years, so we're finally kind of bumping it up. And also, we're finishing up the police department, so actually, we, I was trying to do a three-year phase program. One year was to do the boilers and controls and then air conditioning. I was able to do it in two years. And the boilers here and the upgrade at the police department is about 50, let's say it's 120 off top ahead, we're probably getting about another $30 dollars in incentive money, which is above and beyond Green Communities. The more grants you apply for, the more energy reduction you apply for the grants. So that will wipe out, I think the police department will be 100 percent completed with new boilers, air conditioning, and controls. That's phenomenal. And you say, well, you know, you lived it. It's like, oh, yeah, there's a lot of, this one's cold, this one's hot, this one's freezing, you know, you know, and we're doing the cell area, so it's going to make a big difference. But it's brand new technology, and it's tough, because the heating and air conditioning, it's one zone, so it's, it's, you know, you can turn on the air conditioning in one office and turn on the heat. That's real nice. We don't have that luxury in the Town Hall. It's a, it's a one type system. It's either cooling or heating.
Right, it's all, you know, foot and switch, which is what was existing.
So it's pretty tough, because people call me on a cold day, "Bill, can I have a heat on?" Not really, but that, you know, but trying to change this whole, that would be an enormous project. We're spending about $100,000, you know, you know, with the incentive money on new boilers and controls there, to do this whole system over, be half a million, because all the piping would have to come out. So that would be a major, major project.
2019.
Huh?
2019.
Nah, it's just kind of pushing, you mean, you know, and I don't know what's inside the wall. It's an old building, you know?
Something I mentioned to Henry McLean was, was finding maybe a location in town to do a solar farm, you know. We are behind the times on that, and to find, you know, even more efficiencies and cost savings to the taxpayers would be nice.
I know that is one of the things that Bill and I have looked at, is solar on any and all municipal buildings. We've looked at all the different municipal lands. We've had discussions with different solar contractors, trying to figure out, you know, which ones might be best, which places could we do that? We have, we have drawings for placing solar on different municipal buildings. Which one can we make the most money from? Is it practical? Should we be buying them, or should we be doing a PPA, a public, it's a, it's a public-private agreement of, you get a reduced rate in your electric bill. Many of the PPAs that we have here in town, we pay 80 cents on the dollar, meaning we save 20 cents on every dollar, and it doesn't cost us anything to put those, that solar effort on. The contractor pays for the installation, they pay for the upkeep, and they pay for the unit itself. We're guaranteed the 20 percent, yeah, 20 percent savings on every dollar.
Right.
So.
Any appetite for, in these grants, in these Green Communities stuff, for vehicles, fleet maintenance? I mean, Darrell Warner, who works with Sustainable Milton, has been quite diligent with me, trying to turn our fleet, you know, not necessarily our public safety vehicles or, you know, front-end loaders and stuff like that, the heavy equipment, but some of our smaller vehicles around town make them electric or, you know, greener.
We actually have a, one of the components to the database that we have to keep has to look at every vehicle that we have here in town. Police and fire emergency vehicles are all exempt. Any vehicle with a DPW that is over 10,000 pounds is exempt, gross vehicle weight. But every vehicle that is used here by Town Hall employees, that's used by the school, both the Selectmen and the school committee have signed a, it's a Green Communities policy agreement, that the vehicles will meet a certain miles per gallon per car. Schools tried to buy a car a couple of years ago, and they had to wait six months while we figured out what that, what that formula was, because they wanted a certain car that they could put three kids in the backseat. The cars here, before Joe Prondak can buy a vehicle, he has to go and has to make sure that the combined MPG for that vehicle meets a certain standard that's in that agreement signed by the Selectmen and Green Communities. So it's an EPA-guided number.
For 29 miles a gallon, right?
I think you're right now, because the cars that you have now, those all, those are all four cylinders. That was part of the reason why. But, but you're right, though, in with electric cars going forward, maybe perhaps you might even see through a grant program that you could flip your fleet and go from four cylinders to electric.
We've seen that on hybrids, but the electric component is one that it may be... We've seen that on, on hybrids, but the electric component is one that it maybe doesn't get the mileage that we need in a day. We are looking at it. It's just hasn't been proven that we can save money doing that.
You mean, use enough mile, enough?
We use more miles than that car can be charged for. If you have, I, I know that it's, it's, it depends on the car. If you get a small car, but one of the inspectors may need something bigger than that small car. Having somebody like the fire safety officer, he probably drives more than the charge of that in a particular day. And it's not every day, but it's that certain day, and we don't want to find out what that certain day is.
Then the car's not of use to you at all, right?
And, and that's, that's why we haven't done a completely electric car. We could do the hybrid, but right now, the gas cars are just priced that much lower.
But yeah, my, my, you saying, yeah, I mean, the, you know, the Green Communities, they do have those caveats that you can kind of, you can go for energy manager, you can try to hire a part-time energy manager to help us do what we're doing. Most towns that have used the energy manager, I don't think they maximize the person. I think what they did, they had them do our job. That's not really good. And anybody, so we can do our job. I, I look for engineers that can go out and say, "Where was the savings?" Get the engineer manager to kind of do a deep dive and try to find out, hey, put this boiler in, you save a lot of money. So a lot of towns, they just, you know, because it is sometimes, it's very overwhelming. Because when we come, when it comes to crunch time, trying to get all these reports done, it's like, oh, Bill, get that report. It's like, it's, you know, just you're trying to crunch numbers and stuff. And you did it. It's, it's a lot. But, you know, but you can get, you can, you can apply for energy manager, you can look at, you know, you can look at any type of green car. But it's, it's, it's competitive. So the towns that are just starting out, there's a lot of new towns coming in now because they see all the money you can get. So they're starting out. So they, you know, they'll go into a parking lot and do all new lighting. So they're like high on the list, because the dollars, their savings, a lot. I'm trying to get a boiler down there, and it's a, it's a 40-year payback. So their, you know, their parking lot, you know, is a one-year payback. So they're going to beat me on, on that grant. So it's, you know, it's really competitive. You mean, so we've been really good. That's why we've saved a lot of money. But now it's getting harder and harder and harder to achieve those levels. And anything over seven, eight years is really tough. That's, you try to be about three years or less if you can, you mean, so.
Any other questions?
Speaking of solar farms, there was talk at one point about exploring the area off the dump access road. And I know there were some problems identified because of that site. Is that still a possibility, or is that really ruled out?
Everything's on the table.
So, logistically and physically?
We'll look at anything and everything, yes.
It's not that there's too much ledge or anything up there. So physically, we should be able to do it. There's maybe other considerations that we might have.
The ledge is not going to be an issue.
Okay.
It's, it's change, it's, it's what you have to do to the.
Landscape.
To, thank you. What you have to do to the landscape and how it's going to be received.
And then when you do a solar farm, if you say, say if you wanted to like a mega solar, you know, it's, you know, say it's like 2,000, 200, 2,000 panels. You, if you want a mega solar in there, you've got to cut down almost three acres of land. That's the sell point.
Yeah.
Because now you're trying, you've got to cut down all these trees to get the sun to hit it. That's the selling point. And nobody wants to see somebody going there and clear-cut three acres to put, you know, and then, you know, then it's the cost factor. I mean, I really, I like the PPAs, because it costs a ton of nothing. If you have to, like, this so, you know, thank God, this was all insurance money. This is a $140,000 project. It would take, it would take 10 years to get back your money. So solar is good when you get it for free. It's not as great as you think when you have to pay for yourself. But the PPAs is better. They own it, we get money off your electric bill. If it breaks, they fix it. That's, that's why the school, we did the schools, that was the, you know, that was the bank for the buck. $100,000 a year for the next 20 years. And they own it. If it breaks, they fix it. And that was about a $2.5 million project. So if you're only getting 100, it's, it really takes a lot of year to get back your money on solar, I mean, in this climate. But, so I personally like the PPAs. I mean, you know, it's somebody else's liability, it's not ours. You mean, we just, we take the 100. I mean, it's free money. You know?
Thanks, Bill. That's, that's a good point.
The grin on Emily's face tells the whole story.
Thanks, guys, for coming in again and, and sharing it. Thanks for your diligence, your hard work, and going above and beyond, especially in the grant process, to help ensure that we, we are efficient and green. So.
Thank you, yeah. It's all been fun. I mean, well, it's, it's had to be fun, I mean.
Well, Bill, we're gonna.
It's fun chasing me, right?
Yep. Bill Clark's gonna stay. He's gonna give us an update now on planning and community development. Bill Ritchie, thank you.
Thank you, lady. Good luck, yeah.
Appreciate that, Tom. Appreciate it.
See you later. Take care.
You can go home now. The day's over.
Yeah, it's been a long day.
I know, I know.
His day started at 6:00 AM, so he's ready to go home. Milton's Planning Department assures careful stewardship of the town, land, environment, water, air, energy. We provide guidance and protection to ensure a high quality of life for Milton residents today and into the future. Town planning involves research and analysis, strategic thinking, urban design, public consultation, policy recommendations, implementation and management, development of land in the public interest, and has an important influence on property values and our AAA bond rating. Our efforts have contributed to the town's qualifications and reputation as a place that people want to live. We work to help developers and homeowners navigate the process while adhering to established policies and laws of Milton, with an eye towards careful growth and finding innovative solutions while protecting the town, its neighborhood, and its residents. I have my update broken under things that have come from the planning board and some that have not. Under new growth, which is what we want for our bottom line here under taxes, we have a definitive subdivision under construction at what used to be 3341 Pleasant Street, which is now Jill Kathleen Way. It was an eight-house subdivision on a 3.6 acre site. The definitive subdivision was approved back February 11th in 2016. All the lots have now been sold, and the last house right now is under construction.
Bill, just to that point, because, you know, we've had Inabutter, who's occasionally had problems with the noise and the hours of work up there. What's the timeframe on this being completed? Do you have a sense of that? The final house? The other six are completely built and finished?
No, they just sold the last one last week. Nine months to the end of the next, of the very last one. I mean, the others are in general states of, if the developer sold a lot, he's not building the house. If he sold a house, he'll finish it, and those will be done quicker than the ones that if he just sold the lot. I know he sold all of his lots. I know he's building, I believe it's house number six right now. It is due for one more house, and that one more house will have an effect on that next-door neighbor. It's the last one. When that garage comes down and the house goes up, then it should be blocked from all of that different noise coming from that site.
Okay. So, but did you say that the developer's not necessarily building all of the houses? It might be someone else building a particular lot?
I think he's building that one. I know that the, this is an eight-house subdivision. Six of them are in residence C, two of them are in residence B. The difference being in C, you've got a 7,500 square foot lot. In a residence B, you've got a 20,000 square foot lot. The two in the back have those 20,000 square foot lots. And there's a lot more open space around them, so you may hear more, you'll have more dust, more dirt. The 7,500 square foot ones, there's more house on that lot. So it actually is forming a buffer to that next-door neighbor. She's got one more house to deal with, and then they'll be done.
Probably by late spring next year.
I would hope so, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I thought I saw lights on in two of them last night. Two right on the road.
Yep.
Looks like people are living in.
There's people living in the first two. They're getting ready for, somebody in the second house, too, on the left-hand side. The others are slowly coming in. They're all getting their final landscape plans approved. They're all working on who's doing what. The utilities are all down and out, you know, down and up, and we should have that final coat when they lay that final foundation in. Then they can come back and do that road and get the drainage to work as designed. Under special permits, Woodmere property, the old St. Pius Rectory site, it's a development of 36 planned unit townhouses with four affordable units. The development is, is up, it's going. The roadway layout is constructed. The first buildings are up and occupied. There are more plans coming weekly to Joe Prondak's office. More than 60% of the units are already sold. The first units are occupied. The average market rate units up there are in the $900 price range.
900,000.
For one.
900,000 to me, right? About $900. You said $900. I'm like, get me up there tomorrow, will ya?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll take two.
Okay.
900,000. The affordable applications, affordable unit applications are due September 7. The lottery is scheduled for September 27. I've actually seen those units, and for 209,000 for a two-bedroom, and 234,000 for a three-bedroom, outstanding values.
Milton residents get first.
70% local preference in that lottery.
Okay, good.
Bill, not to put you on the spot, but for somebody who's watching, because I think some people don't know about this lottery, even though the town, Mike has put out the word on their website and the email blast. Did you recall offhand, like, what are the income limits for those that might qualify somebody? For, so if somebody who's watching who might be interested in applying for this lottery, do you happen to have that information with you? Or can you ballpark it?
I know that a family of three is $70,000. I know that a family of one, I believe, is 52, and two, I think is 50, 62.
Well, it makes sense for us to post this on our social media.
We did.
But I just, I think a reminder, yeah.
We actually, we actually have it on our website. I actually had Lauren do it the middle of last week. I was going through the same situation. We had a call, and I knew the numbers, and I, you know, it was one of those, there's more information. There's packets that have to be filled out. So we actually had a section, and I can't tell you where on the website, but I know that if you go onto the planning department and you type in Woodmere, you'll find it in there. It should say it in our current projects. It's over on the left-hand side. The information is there.
It's my hope that enough Milton families in need do see this.
And, and that's why, I know that I've made a comment about it every time. We've made comments at the different planning board meetings, just trying to get people to take and look at it. I know that Joel's written a couple of stories on it. I know that I talked to Doug Sibek about it. So we're trying to get more and more of it out there.
Right, right.
And if you click on the news tab on the town's main webpage, you'll find it. You may have to scroll down a little bit, but, and I know there was an information session a couple of Monday nights ago at the library on a very rainy, rainy night where up to 60 people showed up.
Excellent.
So 70, that's family household income.
You can make up to $70,000.
And when you say 70% of four.
70% local preference.
Okay, but there's only four units.
There's four units. It's a lottery.
So that's three out of four?
It can be.
I mean, just a hard number. I'm thinking like, you can't do three and a half or three. So it looks like it's going to be three out of four? I would just hope that's.
For as much as we have, for as much as we have four units coming from just this one project, as I read into some more of these, you'll see that there are more units coming. It's going to be a requirement of a couple of other projects that we have. So for as much as, if you miss these, you really, really need to get into the lottery system. Get your name onto that list, so that when the next lottery comes up.
Stay in.
You stay in. You don't have to keep going back and doing that.
Once you're in, you're in. That's okay.
That application packet that they make you fill out, that's daunting. It, it is not easy. It, it, it takes time. I mean, if you think you're going to pick it up on the 6th and turn it in on the 7th, it's not going to happen. There's a lot of questions that they ask. I really encourage people to do it sooner, not later. Don't procrastinate. Under applications approved, we have a cluster development, a seven-house cluster development up on Highland Street. The new development is called Marina Estates. The new private road will be Marine Way. It was approved back on the 23rd of March. It was recorded back the 27th of April. Site work is due to start any day. The first building permit should be issued in September.
Who's the developer? Who's the owner there? Who's that?
Dennis Amathburg. And they're not going anywhere. They're staying.
Right.
Building a new house within the Town Farm-Pulte project. 23 single-family homes on 30 acres, again, by a cluster development. It comes with a special permit. That's special board April 13. The appeal for that ended May 4, so we're only waiting on an access permit from DCR. The original application was, was submitted back in March. DCR comments came back in June. The town and Pulte are now making their comments. The planning board had a lengthy meeting with Pulte last Thursday night to send more comments back to DCR. The purchase and sale for that project is tied to that access permit. So potentially October, November. If all goes as planned, the site work could take place late this fall, early this winter.
Bill, not to divert you too much, but on, on this particular project, I raised an issue with you about the name of this street. Did you, have you had any conversation with Pulte or the planning board about that?
Absolutely.
And just for the board's benefit, I guess this found its way into the planning board process, but we're not always, you know, we're not at those meetings, and we're not always watching every single meeting. But Baker Street, it was the name that was designated.
Planning Board Gailen, right?
Well, I think that Pulte came up with it, and the planning board approved it in the special permit. But, you know, Baker, they, that came from the conference room name, the Baker.
They had so many meetings with us. They were inundated with all the Baker Chocolate memorabilia. And they said, "Look, we've been here so many times that we, and we eat down in that area. We want to name it Baker Street." So.
Which is, not unreasonable, but it seems to just let me explain why.
You're right. And the reason, you know, it's a different part of town.
Baker Chocolate is associated with Milton Village.
Right.
But this isn't a historic property. It's the only lasting Town Farm property in the state, I believe. And really, we ought to come up with a name for it, I think, that is tied to.
And we have one. We have one that they've accepted. They.
They have accepted?
Yes. Woodlot Road.
And that's thanks to Steve O'Donnell, Chair of the Historical Commission, who came up with Woodlot Road. There were a few other suggestions. I know Mike had a creative one on some emails that I had back and forth with him. But that's, I think that's a creative idea. So they're, they're willing to do it.
Right. Because William Stoughton left his great woodlot to the town for the poor of the town. So he just took Woodlot and it's Woodlot Road.
I agree. And I think it's fitting that someone like Steve O'Donnell, who's had, you know, so much influence and knowledge about historical, you know, background, and to have that input, so it's great.
Well, they wanted to name it Governor Stoughton, but it was already taken, so.
I had suggested Chickatobbit's brother, but it's very hard to say. It's in our town emblem.
What's his name?
I still can't.
It would have been appropriate, given the, the history with the, some of the Native American areas in the artifacts.
My only concern, just thinking from a public safety point of view, as soon as you said it, is you're very close to Woodland Road. And Harlem, I mean, you're only quarter of a mile apart.
Woodland, Woodside.
Yeah, Woodland, Wood, just, you know, when someone only has a chance to yell something out, I just want, you might want to run that by the two, just see what they think. Just, it made me think of it, only because I thought to myself, is that an East Milton? There's what's, Woodland Road's right there.
Or Woodlot Drive.
Yeah, even that, something, yeah, Woodlot Drive. Even Drive would be nicer than a road.
I think that might have been a good suggestion.
It's more like a drive than a road.
We actually had lane, drive, road. And that's why, when we were going through that discussion of, well, what should the, you know, the suffix be, Lauren came up and said, "Well, his 37, pick one. The post office actually has a list that you can call your streets." So we went through that, and the different people that made comments back, we just tried to keep it simple.
Yeah.
And Pulte said, "They don't care. You know, you tell us what you think you want to call it, and that, that's what we'll call it. We do not, we're not hung up on anything."
The planning board was amenable to this. That's a good point, Richard. We do have some streets.
Drive would work.
We have Rose Street and Row Street. We have, we have, we do have some similar sounding streets. We have, we have, we do have some similar sounding streets.
Just a soap, it's too milty. Like, over there's Milton East, Milton West, but these are so close to each other that...
I'll try Drive and run that one by.
Very close.
Thank you for following that up, Bill.
Wentworth Farm, that's the, it's a development off of Ford Ranch Road. It's a 10-lot clusters development on 13-plus acres. It was voted by the planning board back in May. Started August 14th, and the sequencing over there will be, bridge work first, road layout second, utilities come with the roadway. Then they'll start talking about lots. The bridge will be completed by the end of September. They've already started clearing for the bridge now. Some of the applications under review, we have the Carberry Estate by Northland and we have the Ice House mixed-use development. Both of those should, we should know about the Attorney General's... Her review should be completed by October 11th. We have five new bylaws that we've submitted to the for-town meeting in October. We have a new signage bylaw with efforts from the planning board and the sign review committee. We have a construction noise bylaw, which is basically to control noise by contractors. I mean, that piece that everybody says, "You have a bylaw that says you can't stop before 7:00?" No, we don't. This means we will have that by 7:00. And now that we already have it and we've already submitted it, we now can say, "You're right, nobody can start before 7:00." We have one for bicycle parking for new multifamily buildings, that there be a requirement for bicycle parking inside undercover. We have a non-conforming structures dimensional issues, so that we can maybe save a little bit of time on these zoning board of appeals agendas. And we have a bylaw updates in access by the town clerk. It has to do more with housekeeping, of moving articles up and down. You'll hear the planning board come back and say, "We want to change this one from, you know, N to O," or different lettering schemes. We're going to allow the town clerk to make up the lettering schemes and not have to keep going back to the Attorney General just for a housekeeping change. And we have the denying recreational marijuana bylaw that we have done both as a zoning and as a general bylaw. The zoning requires a public hearing, the general bylaw does not require a public hearing. The planning board plans to have its public hearings on September 14th. They've already been posted, they've already, they're set to be, legal ads are set to run. Major projects not under the planning board umbrella. East Milton Parking, Howt Sign Hudson is under contract with the town and the state to complete the design engineering and to, and for the development of construction documents for the project bidding. Masthat is holding a, Mast Department of Transportation is holding an East Milton Square DEC Project Public Meeting, September 13th, at the Council on Aging at 7 o'clock. We have a 40B development that has been proposed in town. I've attended several planning charrettes for the Adams Court 40B, the Falcone 40B, and I know that people have a lot of questions about it. There are, no applications have been submitted. We have seen, there's nothing submitted to the town, so we do not have anything. What's out there is just the developer taking it to the public so that they can be a very public process and show what they're doing. They want public comment before they come in and file an application. They will have a website, I don't know if it's up yet, I know that they promised that their public meeting they had at the library, that they would have a website, it would be up and running, and every time they had one of their planning charrettes, the updates would be put to the website. Yulin Skating Rink, the town is working on efforts for long-term lease at the rink. The town has offered a one-year permit extension, which has been signed. I wrote the one-year extension for the 2017-2018 season, which was signed by the board at its last meeting, signed by Curry last week. Will get it to John Flynn and then to DCR. So, that being said, ice making has already started for the 2017-2018 season. The painting was already done the end of last week. The rink opens Tuesday, September 5th. So they open the Tuesday after Labor Day, so they're already up and running. So you see cars or trucks out there, they're in making new ice constantly. The Animal Shelter Building, I'm handling the site issues for the selectmen property off the landfill access road. That includes wetland identification, survey issues, and utility locations. I've also been handling the day-to-day committee issues regarding the programming and next steps. Programming is dealing with the architect on design and what the building could and we hope does look like. The Animal Shelter's building committee's been working on that building programming. They've been reviewing the initial draft plans from the architect after an extensive programming effort. Anybody that's been in the blue conference room downstairs, there is a whole series of building renditions of what it could look like. That was first draft, they're trying to get the idea, do you want to go a classical, you know, gable roof? Do you want to go with something a little more contemporary, a one-sided? The one-sided may have better lighting in the building, a little better airflow, but which one do you want? It also shows where it's located on that lot, how it's protecting, protected from the residential neighborhood, how it's protected from the golf course itself. The building itself will not have exterior runs. There'll be people walking dogs, there'll be people with a, you know, a dog in a fenced-in area behind the building, but it's not multiple dogs, it's a dog. People walk their dogs up there now, there's dog walkers that walk their dogs up there now. This will not be adding more noise to what's already up there. It's using the town's existing driveway to access the property. And we've been working with, two local architects are on that committee. Bill Ritchie's on that committee because the building will be a municipal building. We've had lots of very good support from not just the animal league, but other residents on that committee.
Just have a question about the road. Have you walked that road?
Yes.
I mean, it's...
It's a driveway.
Driveway.
It's a driveway.
Whatever it is, it's a disaster. I mean, it's definitely not gonna, we're gonna have to do something to make it functional because it's really not operational from the town's perspective right now, but it's, I've walked it a lot, as recently as last week, and I'm like, wow, it's really decrepit.
It gets wiped out because of stormwater that hits one side and wipes out a big chunk of the road. And that's in a couple of different places. There's also places where the weeds and brush have come right up in there, five feet over the asphalt now. I did go up there with Chase Berkeley last week and we did talk about it and talked about getting some of the brush cut back, so we are looking at it. As soon as we, our next step after we do a little more with the architect is to work with the civil engineer for the specific sighting issues, which will be where the building actually will be laid down. Then we can figure out where the parking lot goes and from the parking lot, we'll figure out how the driveway connects to the road.
With all your previous discussion over tonight, would this building be solar?
Yes, it actually has. Presently, we have, we have three different arrays mounted on top of the building. It's already there, we've actually, one of the changes we made in the plan was to move some of the electrical mechanicals on the roof over so we could get more solar on the roof. So we've done more, not less. Master plan implementation efforts. The Milton Village Milton Waterfront got an MAPC Technical Assistance Grant. I wrote and applied for a technical assistance grant from Metropolitan Area Planning Council. The grant will provide assistance writing potential updated zoning for properties in the Milton Village area. The idea is to start discussions with landowners on potential future use of their properties. The proposed new zoning could encourage the landowner to take advantage of some smart growth components. We have some already, you know, some of the stuff that's down there is, it's reuse of an existing development. It's transit-oriented development, I mean, the T's there, the bikeways there, the buses are there. You don't have to do much. All the shopping that you need to do, it's right there. The zoning could and should encourage maximization of the current space by allowing a mixed-use of land uses. Some of this has the potential to be done by assimilation of properties due to the very small lots as currently configured. Some of those lots are 2,500 square feet. So you take, put two of them together, you might have 6,000 square feet. Well, right now, that 6,000 square feet has four families on it. What else could you do with that property? How can we maximize a reuse and not lose the character of what's down there? And that's what we're looking at in that potential zoning. The second part to that is a review of the current waterfront issues. The waterfront recreational access study. The idea is to prepare a base map of the waterfront area. It's to have follow-up discussions with the committee and the users of the area, to have discussions with focus groups consisting of existing users of Butters Conservation Commission. It's all the end users down there. Coordination and discussion with DEP and Coastal Zone Management, RE, the permits that are down there, other permits that may be necessary down there, the development of a program for design, a potential building program and site improvements. And then, part of the grant is to have illustrations of what those, what those improvements could look like. And all, both of those should be done by December of this year. The intent is that if there is to be zoning that comes out of this particular study, that it would be ready for the May town meeting, which would mean we'd have something to bring to the selectmen by Christmas as a new zoning article. I think that's enough.
That was a pretty thorough report, Bill, thanks.
Can we just come back for a minute to the Falcone proposal and the 40B that you mentioned, Bill? Because I think, you know, we've all gotten some inquiries now from the public. I think we need to let the public who are watching know that the way this is being styled now, it's not a traditional 40B, the developers talking about doing this as a so-called friendly 40B. And that would mean that it'd have to be at public meetings. You mentioned they're already starting public meetings, they haven't yet been in to talk to the board or the planning board, but friendly 40B would really be dependent upon whether this board votes to support it as a friendly 40B. And we're already starting to hear from some residents in Butters, so we just want to assure them that there will be plenty of public meetings and probably public hearing as we go forward to decide whether this is something that the town would or would not support.
They've been meeting with the different neighborhood groups, they've been meeting with anybody that will listen to them on, this is their proposal, and they have asked for and received different design ideas. Some of the design ideas were, if I drive down Bassett Street, all I'm looking at is a garage. You're right, they don't like that. So they changed the design of the first floor where the garage was. So instead of just looking at louvers, which would have been going into the garage, they've actually changed that out so that part of that is a glass wall that looks into the building, part of it is they're thinking about what other potential uses could they put in there. Their biggest problem is going to be providing enough parking. They know that their parking, as designed right now, they need 117 parking spaces, and they've identified 117 parking spaces. As they keep taking chunks of the building away and making it into visible space into the building, those were parking spaces. So they're getting deeper and deeper into their own lot, which they are now undermining to put in more parking spots. When we start talking about needing more, it's going further in underneath what they already own to create more parking spots. There still is room, now it's just coming down to a numbers, a financial numbers game. They have taken a move, like the top floor, when you drive by on Bassett Street, who wants to take and look at a building with four floors above a garage? So what they did is they slid the top floor back and you can't see it from the street, so they have an open balcony on the top floor. So they're thinking of things that they can do to lessen that impact. One of the things they're supposed to be looking at now is trying to show people what it will look like, so they'll get a drone and bring it to that level, take the pictures from the drone and look, here's what the view will be from the different levels. What will the level, what will it be looking from the residences back at the building? So they're trying to bring up all these ideas. That website is supposed to have those images, but again, they're not, they're not ours to bring them forward, it's up to them to do that, and they are trying to do that. They do have more and more meetings planned, they know they're planning to come here, they're planning to go to the, to the planning board. They wanted to meet with each person individually to get whatever the ideas are, you know, tell us what you like, what you don't like. And I know that parking numbers has been an issue, massing has been an issue, the visual image, how do we take and do something more with Adams Court? Because they own half of Adams Court. Right off the, right out of the gate, Bob Falcone was, you know, "I don't want to have a wall walking down Adams Court." I want something that, there's tables and chairs sitting over to the side. I want to use it, I want to make it a part of the building.
As Katie mentioned, and I agree, it's gonna be a long and arduous process, and I think the community should have every bit of say in that neighborhood on how this plan evolves, so.
Michael used, termed it very well when you said, "Right now, it's a concept." And the three of us have been, four of us have been privileged to, like, listen to their ideas. And concepts change with, you know, ideas and inputs. And for all of us in this room, parking and traffic are two big things, quality of life and, you know, maintaining the town budget, finding ways to smart grow, things like that. So, and the one thing I do want to say just to Falcone, and I have not spoken to Bob, but he is someone from who does care and he's listening, and I say, as I said, Michael used the term, it's a concept, and I don't think anyone's trying to shove this down anyone's throat right now.
Every time I see a picture of the building, it's changed from the last one I've looked at because somebody else made a comment.
They were into the master plan committee meeting last week and a couple of members of the committee, I just listened to it because knowing this is gonna be coming before, I wanted to just listen, but a couple of the members of the committee offered them some good ideas that they seem to want to go back and think about. So there had been some suggestions on social media, and we all know that social media often gets things wrong, but there have been some suggestions that this is all agreed upon and it's a done deal, and, you know, nothing really could be further from the truth. This is the beginning stage, and we haven't even had, this is really our first conversation as a board about it.
It is, and I think it's a very public process, very transparent process, which is going to be a credit to not only the neighborhood, but the developer in the end, for whatever product comes about, so I think it's good.
I agree.
Okay, well, Bill, thank you again.
Good.
Been here for a bit. Lengthy report.
Thanks a lot, thanks for coming.
Thanks, Bill. See you.
Thanks, Bill. Okay, so now we're on to agenda number nine, discussion on October 2017 special town meeting warrant articles. Bill did go through some of those.
We did go through some of the last meeting.
Yeah, we did.
With the, we brought, we went through some of them last week. Is there anything in particular?
There's only one issue that I think we need to just make sure somebody takes ownership of. The planning board's signed bylaw article, Alex Whiteside pointed out that we really need to pin down whether the board of appeals is comfortable with the change that's being made, which is to make them the... is comfortable with the change that's being made, which is to make them the board that would have to handle all appeals rather than this board.
Appeals, right, right.
And there had been some suggestion, I think it was through you, Bill, a few months ago, that perhaps the chair of the Board of Appeals may, may think there's enough on their plate already. So Alex had suggested that it might be appropriate, that somebody should really reach out to them before the public hearing in September and before this goes to town meeting, to make sure that they're okay with that change and that they, they think they have enough
Otherwise, it'll, it'll come back to us.
time and ability to handle it. Or otherwise, it might have, it might have to be a change to keep it at this board. But last year, our consensus, Richard, this is before you went
Right, so let's, go ahead.
The consensus was that it made sense for these appeals to go to the Board of Appeals rather than to this
Because it's an appeal. Because, I get that.
And it's more in the nature of what they do on a regular basis, but they do have a pretty heavy caseload.
And I didn't believe. The, I think the issue there is one that the majority of signs that fall under, under that need of going back to the zoning Board of Appeals has to do with, the businesses are in a non-conforming area. They're not in a business district. So, right now, if you want a sign in, the Seasons Hospice needed to go to the zoning Board of Appeals because Seasons, Tedeschi's, and the dental, they're all in a residential neighborhood. We may consider it to be a commercial neighborhood, but it is a residential neighborhood, so they all had to go through the zoning Board of Appeals. The difference is, when you make a ruling, the zoning Board of Appeals isn't going to overrule you. But in order to keep it correct, Joe wants to make sure that the zoning board makes a ruling on something. So he gives them all a letter of denial, which is their ticket to the zoning board. The zoning board's like, signs, we have enough on, without having to deal with signs. The issue here is now, it puts more on the plate of the sign review committee, and the sign review committee has already said, bring it on. So.
We just don't want to surprise the Board of Appeals.
I agree.
Somebody needs to reach out to the Board of Appeals.
Right.
Chairman.
I'm happy to do so.
Okay.
What do you think? Do you think it should be that?
Well, that was the consensus last year that it made sense, but if they have, if they're
I'll send it to John tomorrow in, in forward of your discussion with him.
That's great. And, you know, if there is any hesitation, then obviously, you know, I don't think we have any problem, you know, reverting back to what's
Retaining it, retaining it.
So, you know, so I think that that's probably the proper way to handle it.
I will send John the article tomorrow and send it to you at the same time.
Thank you. Thanks again, Bill.
Thank you.
Try not to get you back in.
I think this article contemplates more going to them of a different nature.
Okay, the 10th item on our agenda is approval of the Eagle Scout Court of Honor Letters of Recognition. Troop Five in Milton, St. Agatha Church is holding. It's Eagle Scout Court of Honor on Saturday, September 9th at 2:00 PM at the Cunningham Hall. The board traditionally writes letters of recognition for the youth who achieve this honor, which are, are on our agenda to approve tonight. So additionally, Troop Five had previously held a court of honor for members who achieved that rank earlier this summer, but the notification was received a little bit too late to be approved and signed prior to the event. So those letters of recognition for those scouts will be approved and signed as well tonight. So we have a motion. First of all, I want to congratulate two of those scouts. It's quite an honor. I've been fortunate enough to attend, previously, two years ago, the Troop Three at St. Michael's, the Court of Honor, and it's, it's really an incredible award to get. I have nephews who have attained Eagle Scout, and it's really, it's something special. So we have a motion in front of us.
Okay, I'll move that we approve and sign letters of recognition for the Troop Five Milton Eagle Scout honorees Nicholas Daley, Caleb Farwell, Matthew Tibbetts, Nolan Carvalho, Michael Eberhart, and Nico, or Nico Navarro.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just congrats to all of them. It's a huge accomplishment, and it's something that attaches to you for your whole life. I think it's, a lot of Eagle Scouts come out of this community. I was not one of them, but there are a lot, and it's a credit to the community, to each of them.
I started, but never got there.
I did the same
John Cronin knows that, but that's okay. We gave it our best shot. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item number 11 is the acceptance of the Curry College payment in lieu of taxes. We have a motion in front of us, first off, and I know that we'll be able to say some more things, but I had a nice conversation with Ken Quigley, the president, the other day, to thank him for this. You know, they do an awful lot in the community. I think that oftentimes, folks don't realize, you know, the little things that they do, never mind the monetary things. And it's a real credit to Curry College, it's a credit to his leadership, being a man from Milton himself. And, you know, we continue to be good partners, and I know that we can count on them when we need them, so. We have a motion.
I'm very glad to read this proposed motion that we accept in payment in lieu of taxes, the payment from Curry College in the amount of $86,305 for the fiscal year commencing on July 1st, 2017.
Second.
Any comment?
I just want to echo your words. I don't think, I mean, most people know that I'm friends with the president, I think very highly of him. I know that you just recently met with him. He's a great partner to have in this community, and I don't think people realize just how many things he does behind the scenes in front of just, he's, is this an increase from last year?
A slight increase, yeah.
Slight increase, yeah. Okay.
Yep. Probably one of the most humble men I've met.
Absolutely.
And wise ones he is, yeah.
He can get along, no? No, he's just, he's very thoughtful, very, I had dinner with him last week, and he just, he's, he's a great partner, and I said this to you before you met him, he's a great partner for you to have in this community, and
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, boards and committee appointments. Capital Improvement Committee.
I'll move that we appoint Amy Dexter, 525 Canton Avenue, Bill Ritchie, 629 Randolph Avenue, Jay Thomas Hurley, 714 Blue Hill Avenue, Kevin P. Donahue, 203 School Street, Michael Hale, 500 Brook Road, April Lamro, 249 Brook Road, John Folcarelli, 361 Center Street, and Lorraine D., 27 Briarfield Road, to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee to serve through August 2018.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Another board and committee improvement, retirement board.
I'll do, read a proposed motion to appoint Paige Appleby to 525 Canton Avenue as our the Board of Selectmen's representative to the retirement board of Milton.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the last committee appointment is the Stormwater Fee Advisory Committee.
I'll move that we appoint Jay Thomas Hurley of 714 Blue Hill Avenue to the Stormwater Fee Advisory Committee to serve through August 2018.
Second.
Any discussion? Well, it seems if Tom stepped down as a selectman, he's taken on a lot of responsibility otherwise. We thank him for that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Adam 15 is Town Administrators Report. Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Thanks for having me tonight. Very busy week, obviously. We're in the heels of school reopening. There's some construction projects underway, literally. They'll be striping Canton Ave, they paved Canton Ave today near the Glover School. They'll be striping that tonight. Lot of the work on the sidewalks and castings and stuff is just part of the process. They will be paving Edge Hill Road tomorrow, and then they will be out of the way for first day of school. It's a very big day for kids and families in the town, so I'd like to thank Department of Public Works Consolidated Facilities is doing another project in the rear of Pierce Middle School and Capone Brothers. They've done a lot of good construction work. I think the community will be happy with a lot of the traffic calming measures that have been put in place to make sure that our families can get to and from school safer. As we know, the two major thoroughfares, three if you include Brook Road at Pierce Middle School, where traffic calming measures were very thoughtfully thought through in the coordinated effort between the Milton Police Department, Department of Public Works, and the schools. And we should see those come to completion by the middle of next week. Still a work in progress, but I think everybody will see new, we used to call it a new dance floor in Boston, in and around those areas. So I just want to thank the groups involved with that. Just, we have some new hires coming to the town. I'll start off with Nancy Stewart, who's not a new hire, but she's, she's been promoted to the outreach coordinator for the Council on Aging and all the work that she's done over the years. She's going to continue that as the outreach coordinator, so would like to thank Nancy for that. The town has hired a new chief procurement officer, Arlene Zanega, will start on September 11th. Very qualified. She's currently the buyer in the town of Brookline, so we've kind of poached her from a larger municipality, and we appreciate that. She also will start on September 11th. Hillary Waite, which is not one of the override positions, but we had posted for an environmental coordinator. Very similar to Ms. Zanega being the first chief procurement officer in the town, Hillary Waite will become our first environmental coordinator to help with Conservation Commission stuff and a lot of the stuff that we do in town to make sure that we continue to maintain Milton's environmental concerns and everything from the way we pick up solid waste to the way we bid contracts and make sure that we're getting green vendors in here. A public health nurse, which was one of the override positions, Susan Poria will start tomorrow, her first day. Additionally, we have Anthony Rota, who started, he was a seasonal laborer. Anthony started today as a public works laborer that, again, wasn't one of the override positions. It was in, there were promotions at the end of last fiscal year that they advertised for and filled. And lastly, and there's still more to work through, we're still seeking applicants for the mechanic and senior craftsman and Bill Ritchie shop and code enforcement officer. But Ryan Taylor is going to start as a new Parks and Recreation Laborer on September 11th. So we welcome all six of them to the town and look forward to working with them. Couple of small items, there was a little blurb in yesterday's Globe South about the LEDs coming to town. We had a very successful bid opening for the installation of them on Friday, which is trying to cross our Ts and dot our Is. The delivery of the equipment is coming on Tuesday, September 5th. And I can thankfully say, if the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted, the $750,000 that we were going to borrow from the stabilization fund is actually 14% less than that. The bids came in and it looks like $650,000 is all we're going to need to retrofit. Having said that, get the contractor in place, get them out on the street. We're looking for anywhere from four to six weeks to turn the town around from an LED retrofitting conversion. We are trying to come up with a dynamic link on the webpage. Alan Bishop from TPW is going to try to work it in where you can type in your street, and they'll tell you when to expect the conversion to take place. But that's, that's still a work in progress, so. Thankfully, we have two of our radar speed monitors in our hands. The first one is going to be installed on Pleasant Street tomorrow between Edge Hill and Brook Road. We had some constituents in about a month ago that were very concerned about that. I am going to allow Chief of Police and Lieutenant Alba, with the support of this board, to dictate where they go and how they get relocated. They are portable, but it basically shows how fast you're going and how fast you should be going and alerts people. They're a very successful traffic calming measure. I believe the other one is going to go up on Reed'sdale Road between, somewhere between Standich and Windsor. They're trying to find the right place there, up near St. Mary's where people come flying off the hill there towards Pierce Middle School. So two of them are in our possession, we're waiting for three more, and it will be a game where we move them around town whenever the chief decides and can come up with a location. Unfortunately, we wish we had more so that they could stay in place, but again, we're going to try to share the wealth around town with those.
That's great news.
Yeah.
It really is good.
Really is, yeah. School construction work I talked about. I had the chance to go out to Norfolk County Agricultural High School last week. What an impressive place. There are currently nine Milton students enrolled in the school. What a place. 365 acres of land, farming, mechanical equipment, you name it, veterinary services. It's just, it's a really, really nice place to work, so I just want to thank the board for inviting us out there and the superintendent. And I had the chance to talk with one of the Norfolk County Commissioners, Joe Shea, about just what the county does for the town. I mean, we are assessed a fee at the beginning of every year, but I think what we pay as a community is well worth what we get for it. To that point, we don't have money in our budget to support traffic counting devices for East Milton Square and that project. So Norfolk County Commissioners have stepped up and they've found that $4,100 for us to put them down into the square. They're going to be in six locations. They're going to be there for three weeks, starting the week of September 12th. They'll track all vehicular data from those six locations from 7:00 to 9:00 AM, 4:00 to 6:00 PM, and then on Saturdays from 11:00 to 12:00. So I just want to thank the commissioners for their support. We wouldn't be able to do this without them, so. Great group. A couple other small items. Milton Playground Planners met with the Parks and Rec officials and some public works folks last week. Looks like they are going to start demo the last week on the Andrews Park Playground, last week of September. Touch wood, weather permitting, have the installation start sometime in October and have that playground, brand-new playground functioning by the end of October. So another great story by the Milton Playground Planners and everyone that's matched, from the Copeland Foundation to anyone that's given, you know, I know the town has matched some dollars for it, but I looked on their website today, I think they've raised almost literally $650,000, so just a tremendous effort, townwide effort. Just a couple other thank yous. Heart Dental and Milton Parks and Rec sponsored Friday night up at Kelly Field. Myself and the girls went up to watch Finding Dory. Very well attended. Did give the hint that fall is coming. Blankets were necessary, but it was, it was just very, very well done. Very similar to the National Night Out Thursday night, that Chief King and Milton Police and their dunk tank. Very, very well attended. It was good. Very, very nice community events. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Parks and Rec for the wonderful program they ran over the summer for the kids, as well as the Milton Public Schools and the Summer Enrichment Program, and the Cunningham Foundation for having the pond open. I know there was a couple of hiccups there this year, but I think those things there and the recreation that it allows our youth and families, for that matter.
Deer camp as well.
Yeah, and the deer camp, that's right.
After the year.
So I just want to send a quick thank you to all those people that put that together. I mean, the work involved with the Parks and Rec alone, with Paul D'Amato and Dave Berdios and all the volunteers, it's amazing. It's my first year as a parent, putting my two boys in, and every morning they were off, they hit the ground running. So just a bunch of thank yous to those folks. Milton Recycling is opening this, is open this Saturday from 9:00 to 12:00. Bring your stuff up there. And the annual household hazardous waste drop-off is the 16th of September, and there's more information to come on that.
It's great.
So pretty, pretty full agenda for the week, couple of weeks, but
And Michael, thank you again. That's quite, quite a, quite a list you're following.
I probably missed something in there, but
List there. No, I
Take tomorrow off.
Yeah. With that, Mike is going to be taking time off, and he's going to be going out of the country, so I'd like, you know, people to respect the fact that he's not going to really have, you know, the means to respond as quickly as he does every day even when he is on vacation.
I know.
So, but we thank you for your efforts. It's duly noted and appreciated, not only by us, but the residents that you serve every day.
Thanks. Again, I will just reiterate that department heads and the people in leadership positions in this town, it's, it's a credit to them. And when they take time off, it's a credit to them, again, because the second in charge or third in charge takes over, and it's, it's pretty seamless, so. I appreciate the comments, but ultimately, it's the people working at a department level and the boots on the ground that make it happen, so.
That's great. We're aware of that as well. We see it every day around town, and I think morale's great because of the leadership here at this board and also through your administration and through the department heads and the people on the streets every day, like you said. So my chairman's report today, I just want to report that I'm going to be meeting with the folks from Government Affairs, from Comcast, next week, to have a meeting with them and discuss some of the issues that we've been having, not only as a town, a whole, as residents, but also internally with our cable board and where we have had some fixes with motor changes. We've had some telephone issues as well, so, you know, we don't take this lightly. I think that it's something that we need to fix, and so I'll be reporting back in our next meeting, where they'll be attending as well. You know, they'll be attending as a group to answer questions from all of us. So look forward to that and want to wish all of the young children and students in in Milton Public Schools and the teachers and administration the best of luck and good fortune on Wednesday as they embark on a, on a new school year. The kindergarteners will start after Labor Day, that's always exciting for new parents in town to get into the schools, but we're very fortunate to have such a great school department led by our superintendent, Mary Gormley, and, and a great staff of teachers that really go above and beyond, so. It's exciting for me having kids in the school system right now, and, uh, you know, I, I can say that they actually aren't hesitant, they're actually looking forward to going to school, so, that's what I'll tell you something. But that's it for me.
Uh, the only thing I was going to report is I, I went to that Mass DOT meeting about two weeks ago on Granite Ave and Squanton Street, and it was pretty clear that they, that DOT has taken into account all the comments that were made at the March meeting, and there, there are big changes that they're adding left turn lanes to each of the four intersecting roadways, and there were some, there's some additional comments that were made, it was only about a dozen people, because, well, I guess it was popular vacation time, so I think a lot of people may have been away, but a lot of the people who were there lived right in the area and had some specific concerns, and the, the chair of the bicycle committee did ask them about putting a bicycle lane going southbound on Granite, which they said they might be able to take a look at, and so, it's, I think they gave us numbers for about $775,000 is the cost of the project, and they said it would take about nine months once they get started, which is hopefully later this year. So it, I think it was pretty well received, and it showed that they had made some, some additional progress on the project.
Did they need the contract? The contract?
No, they didn't.
So they haven't done that part?
No. If they have, they didn't.
So this was the 75%? I think it was. We went to the 25.
I'm not sure that it was.
I think it was the 75%.
It was 75, yeah.
I thought the reason it was driving was the amendment, so maybe that means 75.
Yeah. But thank you for your input, Katie, I know you were at both meetings, the one back in March when, when you pushed for that left turn phase on each side, it, it'll alleviate some of the traffic coming out of the square where people know that they can't take that left turn onto Squanton because it's impossible, so they, they sit and queue at Wood Road.
Yeah.
So thank you for.
Yeah, well, actually, I think that might have been your suggestion, Mike, that Tom raised, but there were a lot of points raised at that March meeting, and they seemed to have incorporated most of them, which was good.
So I only have one, I just, as I mentioned, I did have a, a meeting with Ken Quigley, and, as I stated earlier, he's just a great partner to have, but on a sad note, I just want to express some condolences. You may have seen in the news or read in the paper in the past 24 hours, Michael, you'll know who I'm referring to, of the death of an EMS captain from the city of Boston, EMS name Robert Sancho. And personally, he was my friend for 40 years, he, he came from Southie, the old Harbor Projects, and he, he moved here to the central area when he was just a kid, but when we talk about regionalization and partnerships, there was no one, when 9/11 happened, Bob Haley really created the Special Operations Division in Boston, but I cannot say we did not have a better partner here. I remember, and I was trying to think of just so many incidents, but I remember when the Hendry's fire happened, which was a massive, massive fire. It, it shut down the whole of Milton for days, and he came in with equipment like, just to support the personnel, it was cold and wet. As recently as a year ago, at the Milton Music Festival, we lost power at the site, the generator, blender generator crashed, and one call, Sarge Haley, the city of Boston sent a new generator from, Bob was visionary enough, he helped us start our LEPC, I can remember being up here after 9/11, and we realized that the world was going to change after that, and how, and he created Bragman Street and Storaging, and when I think of so many people, he drove through this town every single day. He went home from Bragman Street, down Thatcher Street, he lived in Randolph, but, um, I wasn't surprised to see so many people reach out and have as many kind things, he was a great partner to us, and, and everyone from Auxiliary Fire helping him, I mean, he never, he was a gruff, you know, but he was a hero on that marathon, on the day of the marathon bombing, as I was driving in there, because, you know, we sent a lot of resources right away, and I can remember hearing, I was since hearing his voice on the radio, and it was like, he was reacting just as he prepared that city for all of those days, and, um, he died suddenly of a, of a very premature, of a massive stroke which he had last week, but he was, he was a great partner to us, especially in the public safety arena here in Milton for many, many years. I'm sad to see him, his death.
I'm glad you mentioned that, and, as you wouldn't be surprised, I had the good fortune to work with him as well whenever.
Oh, that's right, yeah, that's right.
And, uh, and I never knew him until I got a phone call when we were going to be hosting a large event, Amir's Cup Pop Warner, which was an enormous event, and it was going to be 95 degrees and hot and humid, and we didn't know what we were going to do with the masses on the turf at Madison Park Field, and I got a call from Sarge Haley, who said, "Don't worry about it, I know exactly what we're going to do," and he brought out misting stations, and he was on that, uh, complex all day long, ensuring that all those kids and families, um, had the proper cooling stations and, and the resources they needed to have a great day, so. Glad you mentioned that, he's a true public servant.
As a follow-up, he started here.
One is, one who has helped all of us, and, so I appreciate you bringing that to